Okay, so the first two items in the work session were items that Commissioner Wilson specifically requested, so I'm gonna move those to later in the discussion about the shop property. So we'll start with the planning commission to text amendments if that's okay with you, Josh.
Okay.
So we'll talk flag block text amendment and PC zone text amendment.
Mike, can I hear you here? My mic is really on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, just think.
Can you hear me better?
I don't think it's really turned into a microphone.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
A little bit.
I'll speak really loud, how about that?
I like your problem.
We'll do that. Alright. Good afternoon. So I've added two text amendments to the work sessions for today. Obviously we only have 15 minutes for each. About eight months ago, in the county commission meeting, I was directed to bring language back for flag lots to see if it's something the county commissioner wanted to proceed with or not. I drafted text board to see what your thoughts were and then if you wanted to proceed. Do you have any comments or thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is the reasoning behind permitting the use of flag lots in the town? Or are they considered last three?
It's supposed to restrict it to those properties that are one acre large.
We stand with the fire department, the black lots, the only lots that are one acre.
Well, if you have flag lots in smaller lots, I don't know, I just guess I thought it would help the county as opposed to the design subdivisions in urban areas. But if you don't have a problem with urban areas, maybe we draft that.
Well, I mean, I live in a neighborhood that has lots that are less than one acre in size and there are flag lots up the street from me. There's a series of four or six of them. And I don't think that they're one acre in size and I don't think that they're problematic in terms of the way they're designed with respect to access issues, design issues, anything else. And so, I mean, if all we're looking to do is provide for a way to get additional access to an agricultural property or something behind it, then I can see that limitation. But otherwise, I don't know that one acre in size is the appropriate limitation on size.
Okay.
I think you could go smaller if you want. And maybe if you get too small, flag lots don't make sense. But I would think you would be good to order them. Just as a gentleman.
Okay, so that would change the front, the front requirements of flag. I'd have to look at the minimum frontage. I believe I'd have to look at minimum frontages and the smaller lots.
Yeah. With respect to the ones I'm talking about, I would suspect that the frontage is required width for a driveway.
Twenty-five feet?
I mean, others may have a different view as to what's appropriate for flag lots, but I just don't think the one acre. I think the one acre is too narrow or too limited. You know, if you're designing a subdivision, I think probably increase your utilization or nobody does that in one or two areas, you know, create one or two additional lots. See what is possible. Like I said, from a design perspective, traffic perspective, I don't think there's a justification.
I can redraft it. I guess I probably need to be reminded because I remember having a discussion about flag lots and talking about perhaps there's some areas where this might be more costly. I guess useful within the county. I think overall, the way I read this, my concern would be that it could open a very large portion of the county to the ability to have flag lots. Is that your thinking as well? And maybe it wouldn't allow...
This would open it up to the county where it's one acre or greater anywhere. If I redrafted it to include smaller lots and even greater area.
I mean, just a question. Do you understand what Commissioner... I think we intend over five lots to allow that person the ability, if they have the ability to get away from this tar zone a little bit and try to get access to a lot or a lot you might have behind it. It's just one. And I think, I think we ought to follow what the existing zone has as far as travel limits and how we're figuring it out. I guess what I mean is, I don't want us to say if you're in a one zone that you're allowed to put a quarter acre lot in back of it as a flag lot. You definitely need to know that this only exists in that area and those requirements.
So currently, we have no lease that dictates the actual width of the driveway. But if a single-family residential dwelling is required to have two parking spaces as part of that structure, each parking space is 10 by 20. So you go a little bit further on both sides and a foot between.
I think that's a reasonable threshold for it being private land.
Yeah, I mean, you can't have it so narrow that you have a long pole and someone's pulling in and somebody's pulling out. And I think you're out of the ability with your partners to pass.
I think we ought to probably consult the fire department on that aspect. I don't know if they think it's adequate to be able to emergency vehicles in and out. To me, that's the bigger issue is if you have a 300-foot pole, so to speak, driveway, that's far off the road, they're gonna have to get a piece of meat put in there. And then I think that also brings up the point, if they do get a piece of meat put in there, or big fire trucks, is there a turnaround or will they get back out? And I think that'll probably need to be addressed as well. You're gonna have long driveways. There's gotta be good access that we can get in and out with big vehicles.
This is relative, relative.
I mean, I agree with your terms. But I mean, I would think if you're more than... Boy, seriously, you could probably answer. If you're more than maybe 100 feet off the road, you're gonna try to get your truck in there and not leave it on the road, right? Because we don't have a hose to just run 400 feet of hose from the engine.
We need to be able to pass, to manage, to find a capacity. We need to be able to turn around a long time.
So I don't know if that brings up a whole nother discussion on like driveway requirements if you're gonna have, you know, a long driveway.
So Section 8 bills addressing this. It says, "Pay your all the hard surface areas we provide as the term required to clean the black lot." For the turnaround, combination of emergency vehicles and a little pole. Maybe undo it as well, necessarily. So, I mean, I think if we're gonna settle them with, it would be good to set it. On the vacation, fire department. Number three, there should be a minimum separation between the edges. Flag lot and and those that equal or exceed the minimum lot width or lots within respect to its own property as well. So you don't want two, you don't want a shared driveway.
That's correct. My thinking is, and I've seen it in one of the other places I've worked, they didn't have this restriction originally. And they have flag pole, flag pole, flag pole, flag pole, now stretched further and further back. It's the way that they got their staff. Yeah, but if you make it so that you're only left one flag pole adjacent, you're only allowed one flag pole, you don't have the full separation of frontage on a lot before you have one flag pole, it relieves that issue.
Josh, did you look at... If we have, what's the minimum requirement on R1 for the health department? 1.25 or 1.1?
It's 1.75.
1.75. So did you look at the frontage versus what the FAB would be? So somebody has a minimum lot?
Well, our code here, the minimum for one acre is, it's just one acre. R1, I agree. As far as water and sewer, that plays into effect for state requirements for good or bad in the department. But if somebody has a one acre lot, they meet our requirements and the minimum frontage for that is 200 feet. And one acre is approximately 200 feet by 200 feet.
So there's originally enough to get into the back.
Yeah. And 820 has a minimum frontage of 330. So two thoughts as we're talking about this, especially talking about what we just brought up. The truth of the matter is, if you have a one acre lot and you're in unincorporated Morgan County where there's not a sewer system or a water system, you're gonna need an acre and three quarters to be able to put a well in the subject tank on the lot. I think we ought to be considering some type of a two acre something or a three acre something that fits with that criteria. There's no point in having a one acre zone if you can't even build on it in some of those areas. But just a thought, maybe we ought to address that a little bit.
There's a lot of...
Why would you not be able to do that? Because if you can't put a well in a subject tank on the same lot, because the health department requires you have about an acre and three quarters to get both of those on the same lot.
The department.
Where you have... Remind them of the subject tank.
Just where?
There you go. That's interesting. Maybe that's something you need to clarify with them. Because that's what we've been hearing, is take your circles and everything.
Yeah.
Make sure. And a lot of actually black, because I have a lot of yellow.
Yeah.
Well, if that's not the case, maybe that's what you don't like. I don't know, but that's what I see when I look at this. It's not happening. So, you know, thinking about the supply lot thing, I hate to open up a large portion of the county to start having all these flag lots. However, as I think about most of ours only, because we have tunnels only through most of the county, most lots, even if you had three or four acres along the main county arteries, that's gonna work to do this because you don't have enough acreage in the R1 zone. Chances are you have an acre in the R1 and then you got two or three acres in 820 or something. So, well, it probably can happen if you had this ordinance as you probably see an influx of people coming in asking to reason on all of their property to R1, you know, back further than the road to just the tunnels.
We probably have to do that.
So the litigation that's opposed by Section 3 makes me think that the statement 10 might be modified. It says, "The portion of a stem floor of common stem and hard surface shall be managed." Doesn't Section 3 effectively prohibit you from having a common stem?
What this is saying is the portion of the stem or common stem. Sheldon, that's not hard surface, Sheldon, that's...
Right, but how can you have a common stem?
Yeah, nicely stated.
Yeah, you can't have a common stem. So I can't just say the portion of the stem. It's not hard surface, Sheldon.
Thanks. Could you have a common stem though? If the original law shared, you know, shared that as their driveway. No, because as it's written here, you're only allowed one flag lot and pole is considered part of the property.
Judge it.
Josh, Jeremy wants you to speak out of the mic so everybody can hear. Do you have you guys speak more closely into your mic?
Is there a particular area of a lot that you can show us on the map that might be an idea, like you're saying to us with spiker and a little layer, that might be an able to have a harsh trap as an idea? You've got a single on one side and it's on the other side. Other places have to, you'd like to have flag lots. And if you were to take it, I mean, they gotta share it light. So what's the difference in this and that?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question. Blaine, do you want to see an example of a flag lot?
Yes. You're willing to.
You go Mount Green on Commissioner McConnell's street.
No, I mean, I mean, there's places, there's places in, I know in Corvusville in Harshcrabb, probably that they have some flag lots.
There's one. There's actually two right there.
Okay, will you show us that on the map?
Yep, it's on the map right now.
Okay.
On the...
It's on the map, so.
Yeah, so that situation would be prohibited by the code.
That's correct. Then...
Wait, scan that.
Scroll, scroll. Isn't that pointing to an idea?
Yeah, so you've got two poles right next to each other, one coming in and serving that lot and another coming back in and serving their agricultural area.
Okay, I'm not able to see the map, so definitely need to get...
But I agree with prohibit that. You have to focus on the...
True.
And in that zone, whatever that zone is, we need to separate it.
Yeah, by the... By that zone.
So about my next door neighbor, would that have been... Is there anybody who can pull that up? 646 South 566.
Action, but I don't know if this is... Maybe that's such a...
Um, can you... Let's see, I guess one...
Oh, mine's 646.
I'm going towards down, it's near us.
So Blaine, you can see the picture of what we're looking at.
Yeah, I have that one, I'll be at it now. The biggest thing I have is, where the doctor was mentioning where it has to be an acre and three quarters in length. Some of you were saying that. An acre and three quarters, and if you put flag lot, it's gotta at least be that size. So then there's something to think again where if it happened to be an R3, it would make that work, or an R3 and a half. How many acres is gonna have to have that?
Well, if they don't have sewer and water system and we need to play...
That's true.
So is this the one you wanted to look at, Commissioner?
No, this one exactly here. Follows by four acres of lawn, so... Is that...
Correct.
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
It goes right through the barn. Or house or whatever that is. It's one of the same according to this as that. Would that be approved at this point or not?
I would have to check the width of the flag, the pole portion. And if it's not 50 feet, it wouldn't be, it would not be approved.
So is the flag portion of that little portion that is coming out of the road?
Actually, this is the pole stamp. This is the frontage. And that 50, 50 feet frontage here. This is the flag.
Oh, okay. So the pole doesn't have to be the driveway necessarily?
Well, the pole, that's typically where you put the driveway. Back.
You could technically create that and if they bring a driveway in on the other side, they could do a line even on the other lot.
They could do a shared driveway or put this law for two or more to have a shared driveway, but they would have to improve it to private lane standard, which means 26 feet wide, 20 feet of pavement, basically engineered with separate...
So if 26 feet is our private lane standard and that ties into the fire requirement, that might be the width required for the need. You would drop down to the smaller.
Okay. The other one we do about work addresses. Uh, they would be addressed separately? This is one, one in, uh, man up on that house. Be mindful. Most used to know.
Oh.
I'm just curious, with the compare access on the map, so... They're sharing the driveway on the lot. You have on the bottom. So would the address be... All would be where you were here too?
That's where their mailbox is.
That's how, so you can't have one. They have one that leaves that part of the house.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I would think, so if people wanted, they would... Other than where I was, I would be able to think of...
Yeah. I could add another point, but states and the mailbox is a little cut up in the street. Some of the addresses, everybody, or businesses.
I guess a good idea, I mean, you know, I don't think... Fracturing will end up before it's... You shouldn't have to send out a black person to wait down at the... It's scary and do CPR at the same time. Hold on, Dad, I'll be back. Another on my comments.
So this stem is 25 feet measured. Another two stems are 15 feet each.
Yeah, they're pretty narrow.
I wonder if that's what they were thinking, the Samuel Carport study. How did these come to be in the first place, do you know?
I don't know.
I think flag lots were prohibited since I've been on the commission, so they're all...
They prohibited, in 2010 with this current draft and code?
Oh. Tina, they were prohibited when you were on the council?
They were only previously allowed in the land residential development, so that's...
So they were only previously allowed in the land residential development, so that's... Although this isn't the only area. It's a historical innovation.
There's a lot of this historicalism now.
Well, it's not surprising. We live in a relatively rural area. If you have a large lot like that and you want to allow one of your children to live somewhere on the lot, you come in and you create a flag. I mean, you know, it's hard to separate it any other way.
Well, if you were to separate it that, under our code, they would have to put in the street to serve it and have it for... And that's not...
They would have to improve all the street asphalt and everything?
A private street, yeah. There was a subdivision that went through right when I got here and dropped a link in the lady's name. She calls me about every motion to see if the flag lots go through. Her subdivision was split like that, but she was required as part of that approval of the street, which is very expensive.
Well, the reason that you're required with the street is because you have to create frontage. That's the reason. Because otherwise, it's not an issue to have a driveway to have access. The issue is the frontage does not get created because the driveway absence is created by a street.
My understanding was when we purchased the land from Ivan Carter, that strip or land right there was for that exact person. They made that the width of the street right there.
Yeah. It's 24.
Or you said the one that...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that's true. It's probably 60 feet.
I know how that was created. Frontage is on the back side.
Oh. Oh, and why did they do the hole out the back?
The state's always made a farm and it says it's...
And that's Field Street, and he said it's a county road.
It probably took their 200 feet of frontage and that. It has to be law and...
It was supposed to be that split zone. When the lot was in a split zone, there was like an acre up front. The way you know, at the time, they were able to get around it. So we had to rewrite, fix the code so that it couldn't happen here. The bridge is on the back, but that's the front.
So I'll bet their address is on that street as well. That's what they use for it.
I think the address is on the highway.
Help to do this.
It is on the street. Because you can't access it.
I, after the whole thing over this, hey, you can ask him.
With something wrong?
You can't access it on the road.
Do you have other thoughts on flag lot requirements before we...
I'll just take some of them. The planning commission is not giving you this much. No, you directed me to bring you back something to see if you're even interested in taking forward, so if you'd like me to make the changes that you kind of talked about, I can take that with the planning commission.
I'd love to hear their feedback too.
Yeah, I'd be interested. Okay. Just looking at it though, like this, I think this is a good example. Under what we have written, that would not be a lot, right? Because how much acreage is in that Florida parcel? Four acres? Yeah, so see, they don't have the acreage in R1 to do this. So in order for them to do something like this, they have to come in and say, we want to reason on all of the R1s that are just 200 feet back from the road.
The road does extend the town, is only...
Yeah. No, you can...
Just barely.
So Commissioner, back with our time here. Make sure you speak with him. Okay, sounds good.
All right, shall we move on to the next one?
This is where the PC zone text amendments. So the PC zone text amendment was taken with the planning commission. We held three or four public hearings and then we also held three or four work sessions to go through the language completely. The result is the language was for you. There's really no changes that I would recommend in contrast to what the planning commission approved. I think it worked out well in the language that you had. And I think meets the intent of what you would ask me to bring forward. If there's changes that you would like me to make, I can make those or... Would you like to have a work session where we go through the language completely before we take a two quote hearing or...
So there are a few things that I have questions about. In 8-13, 8-10, the new pair of seconds at the last where I grabbed a pen. Starting saying. I think we just need to think about that language in terms of negotiation between the level of information. I think that, I just want to think about that language, I think it is to a certain degree, there's a negotiation associated with that, with the PC zone, right? But I don't, I don't want to give an indication that somehow our legislative discussion is emotional. And so that's, that serves me a bit about that language.
I can reword it.
Yeah, I think we just not think about that. Conceptually, I think we're all on the same page, it's just that language isn't sitting right. And then it seemed to me that most of what was viewed as later in the text as an appropriate concession to allow land communities, um, were involved around open space. And this says the county would be given amenities, not more than required by the zoning district. So I think there needs to be a correlation between what we say in the latter part of the spelling, open space and amenities. What, what do we, what, if I'm on the developer's side of this saying, the county would be given amenities, what does that mean? Whereas if I'm looking later and talking about, all right, I need to design a project of stated percentage of open spaces and so forth, that's understand, just given amenities? I mean, are, are these amenities that are within the project, are these, you know, is it, is it a new property, is it, you know, I mean, it could be any number of things, but if we want to negotiate a new property, we're giving additional density and subdivision, we can consider it, I suppose, but I think if we're, we're probably just talking about land use related types of features within the given project.
Uh, I can also see the way it's oriented, it might imply that we want it dedicated to the county as opposed to maintained by.
Yeah, it may actually be dedicated by the association.
But frankly, I think in most cases, we probably want it to be maintained by the association, at least to some degree, maybe depends on what that would think it is.
Yeah, a lot, right? I mean, generally appreciate, probably talk any more into the mic and speak back. The, uh, frequently what we want is an amenity that's open and available to the public or maintained by the association.
I think we need to clarify, that's the. You know, one thing that occurs to me in reading through this, when we talk about the open space and required open space, um, I'd like that open space, I don't know how we, word this all for you, if you think about this, I'd like someone that open space to not just be straight up without, it has to be usable for some purpose, because I can see in a lot of cases, a developer might think, well, you know, I've got fifty acres here, but forty of it is straight up, it's brown, so I want to cluster all my homes right at the bottom, and I'm going to call all this acreage that's straight up a hill my open space. Look, the truth is, that open space is going to be open space in the lab, what, just because it's steep enough that you can't build one? So I don't know, we say something like, um, you know, a certain portion of your open space must be, um. So in. Slips otherwise available or something, I don't know. In section eight dash thirteen, eight dash zero eight zero, an open space underneath the bulk points, it talks about how the open space that they are going to provide in their, their development has to be split between passive and active, and the active open space has to be usable. Um, if you want further definition there, that it has to be able to be, that the residents will have to be able to access it, I can listen in there, um, but active open space and amenities is, is to find those trails, clubhouse, pools, parks, town lots and more, there's some more items. So that the vision between active and passive, some of the mountains should be considered, should be able to be considered as some of our open space is that we maintain it natural residential state enough, not disturbed. But I've tried to address that concern where requiring a certain portion of the active and usable back by the public. I like that, I would consider a clubhouse or a pool or a lot important to the open space, although perhaps it is, it's probably, at least a clubhouse and a pool is not going to be public open space, it's not going to be part of the, the community association. I don't know.
I don't, I don't think clubhouse or pool are open space, but I do think that they could be the type, as opposed to the amenity distinction, they could be an amenity with respect to which you could say, you know, if you're going to, you're going to cluster thereby create smaller lots, then if you want you to have spaces available for people who do not have such a need, that would be common. Who would be helping would be common. So, we think through, so part one. So I'm contemplating applying for a plan, PC zone. You know, I mean, essentially for doing that, I need to do a land use map. So what land use designation am I going to pass forward, I see the land use map?
Well, it depends on what you're proposing, if you're proposing a mixed use development that's going to have residential and commercial mix, then you're probably going to be requesting a neutral land use management that identifies those areas according to your conceptual design or conceptual home plan that you've been thinking of. It's, since there's so many, so no requirements, I don't want a mixed use district, um, this would be a good way to gauge the county commission support or not support, so they're not investing a lot of money.
And I don't, I'm, I'm not opposing the concept, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're asking them to do, is making sure there's a way for them to accomplish what we're asking them to do. So are you saying, do we have land use designation? We won't necessarily have land use designations that match up. If, if this is just the same environment, so they're going to submit for the B zone request, but dug down in terms of the basic land use, like a bubble plan, and they say, we're going to come in and we want the land use map amended to reflect this bubble plan with these kinds of uses. Okay, does that gauges the interest and so forth? If we're saying, no, we want you to come in for a land use map amendment and identify each of the four or five zones, what, two or three that are required in order to do this? First of all, a land use map's not really supposed to designate the zones, so that's what I, that's what I'm trying to figure out how it's done.
Well, it's not supposed to designate the zones, but the future land use map designations currently mirror the zoning designations that we have, like the rural ranch five, which is simply five acres, you know, the zoning designation are, um, there's village of density, and that's typically the, the R one twenty and lower. You have agriculture and that mirrors the eight twenties zone, so our current general plan almost mirrors the zoning designations, which is, like you said, it's, it would be confusing. But the only, only reason they have would apply for general, even right now, we require them to apply for future land use at the same time. And the proposed future land use map typically mirrors the zoning that they're required just because of power and.
I like your idea of making it a bubble plan. I mean, would, would we be open to simply having them come in and apply to change the land use map to that community zone and ask a submitted requirement, have them show what the proposed plan would be?
With a bubble plan that's not specific?
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Sorry, I wasn't aware of this in that time.
No, I like these ideas, I think, I think, um, we're running short off time, but I think this deserves some more discussion, so let's do another work session if you're okay with that.
Oh, yeah.
To get into the discussion on this one.
Okay.
Nobody good with that. Okay. Thank you, problem with both ways, Josh, I know there's been a lot going to us, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your time and your staff's time.
You're welcome. Okay, we have two other items that we want to discuss, um, let's go through those. Commissioner Wilson, both of those were, were item two requested, which ones you prefer to address first?
DM Shaw is here, so probably that would be best to do that one. Lloyd White already called me and talked to me about a bit about the other one. Is Boyd even here?
Yeah.
He's just hiding behind his foot. Okay, so, so, uh, Josh knows quite a bit about the situation for you as well, so I asked Josh to come and make some resolutions. Do you have, will you just share with the rest of the commission your situation?
I have to.
Are you pulling her place up right now?
I can't remember where. What's that called? I have to, for you missionaries in Detroit, um, I have a property that I bought thirty-seven years ago, it's now an hundred and forty year old home. Um, three years ago, we had destruction, um, we have an irrigation ditch that goes right next to that cemetery, you can kind of see it go stretching the property, that's our sidewalk.
So that dark line.
The dark line that goes right behind the patio, right behind the house. The other, the other construction is my watch, that sets your path, that's the watch. So there's this ditch there, and the property to the south of this is my cat's property, and then next to that is deeper. Um, the ditch company replaced some of their pipe with, was broken with trees, and they replaced three inch pipe, thirty-six inch pipe. Right on my property, one of them more, is a thirty inch pipe, but now it's now to a twenty nine inch pipe. And I have had nothing but flooding since, it goes right through my basement, it goes right over my subject system, um, and we've had foundation decay since then.
So this is all open ditch through your property, but it's closed underneath?
And even, hopefully I don't get in trouble for saying Jared's sitting here, but Jared was down that way on the other side. And he asked my son, what's happening here, because your grandpa always exploded before your mom, because my dad's supposed to be a prick, but it's because of that ditch situation that it's now telling us first. So what we want to do is build a house, uh, behind the ditch, and which is kind of where the green zone. Anyway, so I proposed I'm to build a house, so I came in and I talked to Josh, and Josh says the way the zoning is, um, I'm not able to build a house, I want to secure my existing house now for, my thing is where I'm going to live for the whole house. Let me just tell you. My other problem is, I have the zone R one, but with your tunnel, you're allowing me a half acre of my R one to fill on, so it would need to be rezoned so that I could build just on where the green is. Like, that's not my property, that's my house. So I have already this one and a third acre, my dad's property is two point one five. Um, we've been on the property for fifty-eight years, um, my dad's and I've been next over thirty-seven.
So you want to build back in?
Well, it's R one actually, but.
The white green area.
The white green area, it's, it's R one, at least on the, related to the corner of county direction, that's my third acre, but it's not.
So are you okay demolishing the existing model after the new home is completed?
I am. Because I think last night we demolished our house to have money put in to, to secure it, I either have to go through or do the foundation repair, we've already gone in and worked and put in to put stable remains at, at this point, but even today, I'm this far from water, so we can pump around in my subject system.
So why couldn't we issue a permit within a period coming longer and waiting to demolish the existing home, issue one zero within thirty days of the issuance of certificate of occupancy?
And that's exactly what I've been asking for the whole time, is just never, or will we decide in the early, that that house will come down within whatever time period you tell me, because as soon as I'm moving the new house, it can be coming out at any time.
I've, I've heard of these sort of practices a couple of times, and, I mean, it currently is against, so we're trying to have a condition, is that what we, how we.
Oh, it's not a, a warrant and three, right, to add this as an option.
Exactly, I guess that's a concern I have, is, is, um, in the case where, um, and I know it's not your case because you've explained it first, but let's say somebody else comes in and says, hey, I'm going to be the same state, and then they don't, you know, there's the house.
Which happens to be like that.
Then, then does the county have the ability to cover this, and what will do with that?
I think post, we, the agreement could require that to post a surety bond or some other form.
I don't even know about that.
So that, we, we think our current ordinance prohibits us from having an agreement like that, or are we just assuming that it's not allowed?
Um, our current ordinance allows, uh, for a single, one single family dwelling on a piece of property, um, unless they're attached to the internal accessory dwelling section, and so issuing a second permit for a second single family dwelling that's going to be detached is currently not allowed by our code. Um, on top of that, if a building permit is issued, even with that agreement in place and they have the security, um, I really have no teeth to enforce that, I can't hold off, uh, the, the building official can't hold off issuing, let's say, a vote on the structure, if that structure beats the code, then we can strictly break the code.
Correct, unless the post said, the post said.
Will the building code, so the.
Well, I, I wasn't suggesting that, that sort of demolition of the existing home was, um, a contingency that needed to occur before the seat of, of certificate of occupancy issued, I was saying certificate of occupancy issued will send triggers a thirty day period within which they have to demolish the existing home. So we're not trying to get to the point where we have a perpetual violation of our code, we're trying to accommodate the construction of a replacement dwelling on an existing lot of record, and, and maybe there's a prohibition on that. I mean, I understand your basic issue, we, we can't have two single family dwellings on the same lot, but.
True, true. So maybe the solution is we, we add a section to the code about replacement dwellings, because this will come up more and more as a stage in the county, there will be people that come in, buy a lot of them all, and want to live in a short term and tear it down, you know, or own one and a half for years, so maybe we just need to revise the code and add a section for replacement dwellings that include these items that are concerned in it, and it could have a surety bond, you know, something in it if they, so if they don't tear it down, the county would have the funds to go and tear it down ourselves. I don't know what kind of people you're not even, uh, who are going down in Oklahoma. Who would be going down in Oklahoma? Not sure what they'd do. Well, actually, it's the same thing, it's the same thing with parks and subdivision, so it's the same thing. You want to be a lot for it and develop a region, you build a new division.
Typically, per infrastructure of the use by the residents of those subdivision, it's probably a few dollars.
All the same is the ability to create the land ownership.
Are you concerned about the county's legal ability to handle the property?
I'm concerned, yeah, that's pretty much it, the county's ability to have any teeth to make sure that it's demolished. The thing is, if we adopt a detached accessory dwelling ordinance that allowed for detached accessory dwellings on properties, like guest houses or condos or whatever, this, this would go away. Because we wouldn't care.
Yeah, but I'm not sure we want everybody to be able to do a guest house on the properties. Again, I'm, I'm not entirely opposed to that either, but I'm not sure that there's countywide support for that kind of position, but. I mean, I think we could do an ordinance for replacement dwellings. And then in terms of the teeth, and I think that's part of the agreement, which has to be a part of the ordinance, that they agree to do it. And look, enforcing any of those provisions is always challenging, even in the surety and the money was always hard to get money on the surety and again, and that sort of thing. But I think by agreement, we could certainly establish the right. And if it, if at the end of the day we were concerned about it, we could go to the court and say, we want, this is our contractual right, we want you to give us more of allowing us occupancy to be managed. I mean, it's, it's really no different than jurisdiction's ability to tear down a condemned structure or a condemned structure. There's, there's got to be a process to follow and an agreement allowed that has the way their claims will take them along the lines. But it seems like we could get there, and like you said, probably would come up again. And I could be able to try to address, that's not a rapid, short-term solution, but at least it's a way forward.
Is there a short-term solution?
Only if, you know, Josh and you can agree that we could have that kind of agreement. And again, I haven't looked at our ordinance system to see if my fingers will be to do that. But if, but if we, if it's not allowed, we have to follow our own ordinance system, so if we're not allowed to have that kind of agreement to accomplish this kind of situation, then we don't have a way. Doesn't need to take forever, wouldn't be. So will you look at that? Uh, what, I mean, I can talk to Karen and Josh and see if you think there's a way. But other, I mean, I understand that a lot of that concerns her. I think Deanna's biggest thing is she doesn't want to move forward and spend a bunch of money.
I still have a lot to help you.
And without, without money, she can build a lot of law. That's, that's the thing. I mean, you can build a lot of law, you just have to tear down the structure and lay it out. Somewhere else like those new. I mean, if you're looking, so that's always your fault. Right? Nobody disagrees with that, right? You can demolish it for sure.
With salaries only?
Yeah, but there's an expense associated with that and a hassle and all of that sort of thing.
To change the house. Yeah, I figured it out. It's going to be a hundred thousand dollars. And scattered in my pocket. Because I need to sort my belongings. I have to pay the rent to go somewhere. Plus I have to share a hospital.
Yes.
And over a year's period of time, that'll add up. And so, that was kind of costly. And I don't know when you have that house. So right now, I'm studying, I either have to put about forty thousand into the old house. So hopefully it's through, I mean, so I didn't, because I have to, you know, search your basement. And so the old rock basement, the, the line is physical. And so I'm kind of bitter because I either have to send money there or for them.
So what are we talking about time-wise, Josh? Do you want to direct me to put together the text amendment allowing for temporary occupancy on the residence, on the resurgence and strike? I can work with Eric to put that together.
And now, so let's say that we had that in. Let's say we had it tonight, okay? And that's on the list, but you're still talking about noticing it up for a planning commission, hearing and recommendation followed by notice. So you're probably at least sixty days away getting me out of it available. And maybe you could run notices to concurrently, we don't typically do that. But there's not one eleven, I feel this is too much. Short enough. I've never encountered this before, so I'm not familiar with the jurisdiction that has this. Because if there was one, then we'd find that we might be able to create it.
Now, that's something you could do if you want us, in the meantime, if you wanted to reach out to other jurisdictions and find out if they have any type of code that addresses this situation. If so, you could give us a copy. That would help, Josh needs. So that's something you could do, you know, to help me with the law. But it sounds like, I mean, I don't know, you're talking a couple of months, you know, you could get something hashed out of the recorder. We're certainly agreeable to it, we just have to be able to find that somewhere.
So basically, what you're talking is making my experience for you, are we able to help?
I would hope we could.
Give me the best, it's a half.
I mean, if I, if I had, if I had that, my mind is, I would like to. I know I can go in there. I'd like to get my well permit done. My garden has some of the things done. Because I want to make sure it's reviewed. And just get all my bases ready so that next spring we could get a permit to build a whole, build a house. But I have to go well in the meantime. So that way I can go further, so.
Do you not currently have water?
Oh, I have a well. It's just right in the middle where I'm on Bill's house.
Oh.
So, well, there is actually a well to get far enough away from the new sub-basin.
Got you.
But the whole apartment's enough, they're so tall, they're so wide. The only thing that's against me, just to get her wherever it's on, is the hundred, sort of radius around the well.
Well protection.
The state said I can put the well anywhere I want. Even right on the, the property line. If I have a decent property of property. And my dad's already said that's not a problem. So I can't, I don't think it's, to write that and, you know, put it. So, right now, I can see any reason why I can't report it. I just hope I'm a good student. A lot of money. Because if I can't build a house, then I gave money to those who aren't. So that's going to run out.
My, yes. Is there a solution? Because I know she can learn to save flooding problems she had this year, next year. If the little ones, you know, did their thing again. Is there a way to just add this to our code somehow? That a house has to go in and rebuild that home and tell the other home is built? And then tear down the other? Is there any way?
Yeah, that's exactly what I just talked about. You may not have been able to hear, but it does need to go through the correct process to happen to the code. That's our plan, is to add it to the code. Because it's a land use side, we'll have to go through the planning commission, they'll have to give the recommendation, and then the county commission will, will secure it and approve ultimately. So that takes a little bit of time, I mean, we're figuring two to three months probably to get that fully passed. But again, something you can do is if you can find some other jurisdictions that have a code that allows for that and can forward some information on that, will just reduce the amount of time that Josh and team have to spend researching it. And it's something that you could be doing now to kind of move the process a little bit. So I think, just, if I'm, if I'm speaking out of line here, let me know commissioners, but it sounds like we're all agreeable. This ought to be something in our code. It's something that is coming up now, has come up in the past, will likely come up in the future. So we agreed that we need to make a code amendment to it afterward. The, the issue now is just getting it done, going through the proper process to.
Hey, so you don't like that?
Because I would think that.
I would be safe, continue moving forward.
Yeah.
And, yes.
Do you have any concerns with the sighting of the new structure on the lawn?
I haven't seen.
He hasn't seen anything. He's going to see this as against your ass now, and I didn't have money.
We should make sure that, that that's the other aspect of it. It fits, it meets, you know, setback standards. I don't think, looking at it, there's going to be a problem. But if, if that area was in flood zone, for example, that would be a problem. That would be a problem.
But the whole apartment's a flood zone.
You mean where the existing structure is? Are you in, you're in the flood zone, you want to build a new structure?
Yeah, they put that new pipe in, and I get home three days later, and all of that rain on the roadside of the ditch was over six inches of water, and my sub-basin hangs over there. And I had to wait two days for it to dry out. To me, that's a problem, and I, I knew it was a problem. And then it's happened six times in the last two years, and my husband's having heart palpitations, starting to hospitalized suicidal. And I can't go on with the rest of those issues in my life.
Our code does say that the zone in which the house is located sets setbacks in the house. Yeah, so the setbacks in the age of my zone are fairly large. But I haven't seen the size of the house in the building, so I can't say whether it is or not.
I haven't even checked the size of the house yet, because I don't have the tools. Those are all, all, yeah, my plans are working.
Sure, Mike, you can ace here for a variance, though, given that there is remaining one plan on the property and that there is a current hardship. So it's not financially based, but it's to honor the, or the specific people's needs.
It hasn't been as long, we've been five years in the last two years because of the structural difference in the ditch. That's caused all my issues.
Well, we appreciate you coming in, we'll be working on it.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, you had a chance, but because, why are you okay with the one on that? You good for a reaction?
I mean, I don't know if he's outdated, you pay on that, but he was making verses. It's all updated, all the stat, right?
So initially, we talked about the water center and the issue with the vision. And so we're going to go travel the road, we're going to try to fix it. We're going to wait for a while and tear it down and see what's going to cost. Our backup plan is, we do have one other water center in East Adams where it's sparse. They use it once in the wildland, all of a sudden they'll read down, we're going to park it in the county sheds. And that'll get it, and issue a base in time and find out what's wrong with the code. One budget change I would like to do is, it was talked about taking that twenty-five thousand platform grid from the wildlands awarding and system awarding. So the money that we saved there was primarily for funding staff. So our first responders staff. Over nineteen is at the Saturday, Tuesday, Saturday. So that, that was in the fire budget, not the wildland, right?
We already have that in the budget?
No, we did for a Saturday, but maybe I'm wrong. No, for first responders. It was firefighting, right? Or the volunteer. The difference is, the volunteer is not standing at the station, the first responder at the station. Which takes response times to do thirteen units down the stairs. And that was, you said a request for a man?
Yeah, it just, it lasted.
Right. Can I, you know, Leslie and, you know, C C, you want it? But we can have that. Any questions?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we?
All right. And so I was all ready.
I usually start around quick.
Twenty twenty-three, just completed a work session, talking about a couple of amendments, potential amendments to the county land use code. As well as other items, including the fire department budget. We will begin with an invocation, we'll also request a budget release. And I'd ask Commissioner Anderson to be here.
Glad we had the opportunity we had to meet today as commissioners and residents of Moby County. We're grateful for the moisture that we've received and continued to receive. Much needed in, in our area, and we're very grateful for that. We're grateful for all those county staff who are so willing to require extra hours for, for the residents of the county. We're grateful for our first responders, the hours that they give. We're just counting, grateful for our service and everything we do. Given their time and the years of life, we're grateful for our feelings and the enjoyment. We're grateful for this beautiful valley, where we live and an opportunity we have to share together, we say something, Jesus Christ.
Please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I am the President and Justice to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We have one consent item this evening, that is the review and approval of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Under new justice, the members of the power are invited to staff. Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve this from September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. So. Say it. Motion to say, all those who voted aye aye, the opposed, if it passes. Declarations of conflict of interest for any commissioners on any items on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a public comment period. It's an opportunity for the public to make comments to the commission. We will ask, please limit your comments to three minutes. We do have one public hearing on the agenda this evening, that is item G. Regarding utilities and town centers. If you'd like to address a street diagnosis, you'll have an opportunity to be here on. Is he open?
Yes, sir. I'm Mr. Paul, and I'm here to protest the approval of Mossach's fees. Over the last year, year plus, of all the destruction. Over the last year, year plus, with all the destruction of all the trees, all the landscape of the mountain. Peterson Creek runs muddy all the time. Get rid of muddy all winter, which it never does. Even high water years, we sell it spring runoff. When all the other creeks are clear, Peterson's muddy. If there's even a higher modern rain like there was a week and a half ago, it's muddy. And that sediment runs down the creek, deposits into our ponds and sil- silvers, the ponds and into our irrigation systems. I mean, what is happening up there right now is far worse than the burn star. You know, burn star burns the mountain, but it doesn't churn up the mountain. And that's, to me, that's what's happening up there right now. With the continual looting or tearing up the thousands of dump truck loads that go up there over the months. In the past, we've had issues with Peterson Creek as far as flooding that. We as neighbors, having been in the creek, cleared out the over from the hills to make sure we have a clear slope now. So they're worried about county planning to pay the camps or creek beds without proper authorization and that. I just wanna know if we can allow Wausatch Peaks to just continually keep removing the foliage up there without any way to. I know, I'm sure they're playing, I'm sure they're doing things, but it's not enough right now. I think things need to slow down and be evaluated before we continue to approve things tonight. And I just wanted, I mean, who approves this stripping of the soil without the concern of the spring or the residents? My next question is, is, you know, I live right near Peterson. I drive up the on-ramp every day. When it's Wausatch Peaks going to build an employee contractor parking lot. On their property for their employees and contractors that work up there. They completely overrun the dirt spot next to the freeway. This is sort of any used park and car pool or catch a school bus for school activity that was outside the county. I don't think you could do that in front of the neighborhood or any other part of the park there. And I know probably say you don't have any control over that side, but we do have some leverage with Wausatch Peaks to do my thing in the community. They drive their side by sides. Kinnicostile dump trucks, they go out there on the mountain. When they bring them off the mountain to get them out of there, they drive and ride up the county road and up to the dirt spot. Along with other construction equipment on the public roads in Peterson. I'd say they unload and load some of their ready equipment there at the dirt spot. And my question is, is are all these pieces of equipment licensed to be on public roads? Are they insured to be driven on public roads? I, for one, I have a side by side. I have to have a license and ensure to even have it on the trailer when I'm towing behind my truck. Much less drive it on the roads. This is, this is not to mention all the rocks in that. I had a big rock fly up in my hood the other day from the truck, all the other wrecks, and they just came out of the, out of the area. Out of Wausatch Peaks and. Nothing you can do. You just live there, I guess. But I'm asking that you maybe slow down a little bit and make them. Use some of the things we've begun to control. The dirt comes along. It's always red. It's always the stuff that they're hauling up in there in their trucks. So. That's my comment.
Just need to hurry up and go. I'm not here to speak out about you guys approving this three A portion of Wausatch Peaks. I'm here to speak out as a concerned citizen and as a taxpayer. The referendum has been in front of a judge and the Supreme Court. There's been a total of six motions of summary judgment and motions to dismiss. We've lost every one of them. The judge just ruled in the referendum petitioners' favor. And the five petitioners, remember, I'm not one of those, has filed for attorney's fees that are gonna go more of about two hundred thousand dollars. They're asking that the county or Wausatch Peaks, or it's divided. I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but it's costly, obviously. You also have people that are purchasing and have purchased lots and are building homes up there. And if this R S E becomes no longer void, no longer, then it becomes void. What kind of position is the county going to be into these landlords and homeowners that have already been able to start or build on something that have been giving building permits? But then it goes back and the R S E is a very, the very heart of the whole thing isn't happening. It doesn't happen and zoning is now void. Who's gonna be responsible for that? Me, as a taxpayer? I don't, it's concerning. It's very concerning. And now we just filed another appeal, the county did, which is now going to add to that two hundred thousand dollars. And I just think we all need to take a good stop and let this work its way through. And before anything else gets through, I know I had a long conversation with Derek today. And he's telling me that the planning commission has already approved this three A, but yet I talked to Debbie at times and Shane Stevens at times and they all tell me, we don't approve anything. We're just giving a recommendation. So I don't think this has been approved. I think. And he's saying because the application was submitted for the graduated ruling, but the bottom line is if it goes back, that the R S E is no longer valid, then none of this happened. So that's something I'm here to tell you that I'm concerned as a taxpayer. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no additional public comment. We do not have any presentations this evening, so we will move to our action item section. Action item number one. Kimberly, I think Kimberly's here. This is a renewal, upgrade and renewal of our postage machine and our contract for that machine. This has no budget for it. It's a just over five-year contract. The amount is one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents. Are there any questions on the agreement, the postage machine contract? Okay, now we'll look for a motion to approve. The new postage machine coming up. So move. Motion in the second to approve. All those in favor? Aye. Have to be opposed. Well, I go by. Motion passes. There's blame on one of us again. Thank you, you guys.
Glad to hear that. Sorry, I didn't get it on the other one. I'm in the server.
Okay, thank you. So unanimous motion passes. Moving to action item number two. This is a request to change the county's property. Tax abatement, property tax relief from the property of three hundred dollars to the state standard, half tax due, roll max of one hundred and eighty-six dollars, whichever is less. Penny's here. If you have any questions regarding this?
I think we all have a question. Do we have a kind of a?
Sure.
So, so is the saying that that previous to this, these folks that have a undue hardship and need property tax relief? Would be as low as three hundred dollars? Or was that a fixed amount?
It was a fixed amount.
It's a fixed amount that, that's written off in addition to the other. So there's the three different abatements. I don't know if you have the packet that was sent.
Yep.
So there's the three abatements. There's the indigent abatement, which is up to the county's discretionary. And that's the one that we're talking about. And then there's also the homeowner's credit and owner's valuation. So those two are amended by the state. So the indigent abatement is a, is a third one and it's only for individuals. That makes over thirty-eight thousand dollars. So what I was looking for is if it wouldn't have tax for up to one thousand one eighty-six, it would just apply ten dollars. And I don't know where that three hundred dollars came from. So.
So we did, we approved one of these like a meeting ago or two meetings ago.
Yeah, that was, that was different. That was under a hardship. So these are different.
Okay, so this is.
These you have to be sixty-six or above and you have to meet the thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, okay, I'm good then.
So it's only for your elderly patients, patients. Elderly residents.
So hardship can't be covered.
Yes, hardship can be under the sixty-six.
That's what I was worried about. I didn't have to make the hardship, another hardship. So, yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions? Okay. Why are you like relying on life? Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we modify our county's base property tax relief. Standard to be one half of the tax due from local or maximum of one thousand one hundred and thirty-six. Second, I have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Any of those, motion passes then. Okay, action item number three. Jeremy.
Disgravitation of our I T policies and incident response plan. Then, well, Jeremy's coming up. Oh, I guess he's already here. I just, I just wanted to say thank you for the time you spent on this. There's you all involved and you're.
You're spending quite a bit of time on it too. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate making my bad words sound good.
Any questions for Jeremy regarding the policy?
So, I read through this and I think it's great. We frequently use this computer, which is not genuinely accessible.
That's what it's talking about, but that's a little bit. But we don't.
Yeah, no, I was gonna ask the same question you asked. I think all those are always another.
Yeah, just a little bit. Alright, any other questions for Jeremy? Also, Jeremy, thank you for taking the time and effort to set this room up this evening. For those who are unaware, the reason we're in this meeting or this room tonight is because our commission room is being renovated currently to add some much better technologies to look at. Better camera, better sound system, screens, the whole, the whole minutes. That's why we're here in this room tonight. And Jeremy spent all the time getting this set up, so thank you. Okay, now we'll look for a motion to approve the I T policies and incident response plan. We have a motion. We have a motion. Second. And a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There's two. Motion passes. Thank you again. Alright, item number four. This is a resolution appointing a representative and an alternate representative for the use of to check out a new annual membership meeting to take place in St. George in November. Any comments on this item? I don't know who's planning on going to the, this is in conjunction with the UAC meetings. I'm gonna try to attend those tomorrow. You know where you had it? It was over this last year. Like you might last year, correct?
No, I'm sure, but I can go on a day here. Not with people like you, but it's up to you guys.
You may have a strong feeling this is going to be really? No? So what, are you planning to deliver the UAC meetings? I'll make a motion and then we appoint, link back those three representatives. Jeremy Anderson will turn the purpose into the project. We have a motion in the second. Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes moving very much. Without a mistake. Alright, item number five. Jeremy. This is a discussion of decision Wausatch Peaks Ranch, approval of Wausatch Peaks Ranch based three A final.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just in the chair in position. This is action item number seven five, person manager general. Addressing the complication twenty-three point zero three six. This is Wausatch Peaks Ranch LLC requesting approval of the W P R base three A final plan, which is proposed subdivision twenty-six blocks. Property addresses located in Prostity at four two one three Mar, 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 Valley, High. Covers an area of about one hundred and eighty-three point one eight acres. The general plan letting you say the designation as this is the Wausatch Peaks Ranch Development Agreement, Resort Special District. Sorry, the zoning is Resort Special District. Staff has approved this project and find that it's all known code appointments. There are no complaints in the county engineer. It's a very obvious. Staff is recommending approval of the planning commission out there, sorry, the city council. Can you share with the county commission? I along with Josh can answer. Any questions you may have, then the evidence in the audience tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, questions for staff?
So what's the difference between the common and area designations?
Because the.
So you've got ski trail easements, drainage use, and school space. There's also inclusion space here. So I understand that, so ski trail, ski trail easement, which is used in the law. Drainage use. That is, there a difference between the open space easement? I'm finding that I thought there was more area.
We're cheap boxes. We're not able to, that, 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 our, our, they will, they will, they will, they will. So that is your question?
So they're just open space parcels and it would be on the, on or by the association. Some of the.
We ask that everybody speaks up right here.
Okay, we can do that. Are you, like, are you, you know, glitter on the screen that we just talked about earlier?
Are you talking about the street in the? Yeah, Peterson. Peterson. I'm not sure that's related to this project. The runoff from this project may affect it and I'll have our county engineer check the Smith. That W P R is operating here to be sure that they're operating according to state requirements or start water. The start water protection prevention plan or pollution prevention plan. But the street.
But the street itself, I think, is lower, lower down Peterson as opposed to, um, on the WPR property.
Well, just, just to add to that, Josh, I think Los Forks, uh, Houston actually was true. I, I believe.
Yeah, I can add smart to the very.
And I hope this will be a question for staff or that I'm looking for. Or is it public, public, as far as the parking? I hope you and I can, so I don't know what the plans for.
Did that property is owned by the public as public driveway? Uh, we can't stop people from parking there. Obviously, it's not paid, it's not strike, but if it's, if it's publicly owned and the public has the right to park there, um, I'm not sure what we could do about that.
I guess my question isn't what we can, but more of is there a plan? Is there any other plan besides what's happening? So that might be for that.
You, yeah, if you want to ask the applicant, that would be great. I'm not sure.
It's us, yeah. Here.
Hi, Commissioner, I, I don't have a mic over there, so I'm gonna step up here so everyone can hear me okay. Um, there was a question that resident, uh, called in to ask me about today as far as noticing for this, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I talked to Josh about it. It's under our code eight dash three dash thirteen. Uh, there was a sign that went up for this meeting tonight and it said Thursday instead of Tuesday because they were using a sign that had been used for the planning commission and it hadn't been updated. Uh, so there was a question of whether notice was properly given for this item. But in our code, under subsection F, it talks about subdivision class. And it says the county shall provide advanced notice at the date and place for public meetings regarding a proposed subdivision as follows. And so it's talking about meetings as opposed to hearings. We're still in the meeting portion. Uh, we do have a public hearing tonight. Public hearings have to have different notice than meetings do as well. So typically, a meeting is gonna require at least 24 hours notice of the meeting, um, except it is outlined here for subdivision class, which this is. And it talks about mailing notice of the first public meeting. So the first public meeting for this class was the preliminary class that the planning commission heard back in April. Um, and so according to Josh's interpretation, it's the zoning administrator of the code, that that would apply only to the first meeting for subdivision, which is the planning commission meeting. Um, despite that, the county still encourages a sign to be put up, even though it's not required by our code. And as soon as they were aware that they had the wrong date, they went out and fixed it, so there was still more notice than is required by law. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, um, just in case you thought there needed to be an update to the code or a different interpretation. But I, I told Josh that I kind of explained it tonight, um, and I think it's a reasonable interpretation that applies only to the first meeting, but if we think that that needs to be changed, then we can have a direction to staff under, we would say eight dash three F three to a subdivision. Any question on that?
On that, you might want to stay there for a second.
Okay.
So on, in regards to the other concerns that were voiced regarding the continued, um, approvals, what's, what's the situation there?
So, um, the county is, is taking different positions and there's various filings that are going before Judge Hyde and the Supreme Court. Um, but the legal recommendation from my office is under the Western Land Equities case law and its progeny, when an application is submitted, it grandfathers the applicant into whatever law existed at the time that application was submitted. Um, there may be some confusion with some of those that even I talked to today saying, well, how can this application go forward if it's after Judge Hyde made a ruling? The answer is if it was submitted before 11:07 AM or whenever it was on September 15th, then that order was entered, then they're grandfathered in under the, the existing law at the time. Um, the county is not ignoring Judge Hyde's decision as some are, are claiming because we're, we're taking a different approach or I'm recommending a different approach. And once again, we're still in, you know, there's various motions that are being filed and responded to. But, um, under Article Six of the Constitution, now that Judge Hyde has made the determination that, um, he believes that they, they met the standards outlined in statute, the bare minimum requirements, exercise that right of referendum. But now Article Six of the Constitution says that the law doesn't go into effect pending the outcome of the referendum. Um, I've spoken with attorneys for the petitioners and the attorneys for Los Angeles Beach. And as you can imagine, they're a hobbish side of the spectrum, saying that you shouldn't issue any permits, even for those that were grandfathered in to Judge Hyde's, it really doesn't have an impact until the Supreme Court decides. So, you know, you can mention that, that there, you can't get very much further apart than that. And the recommendation, at least from my office, is that when Stacy Clark, using her statute statutory authority as an elected official, made a determination that it was insufficient referendum petition, at that point, that was where the, the position of the county was. Now that Judge Hyde has made a ruling, the county's position has shifted to say, okay, we're not going to ignore Judge Hyde's ruling. We're actually going to make, to recognize that as legitimate ruling. It's changed the position until reversed or it goes to referendum and it fails or maybe it doesn't and it succeeds. And then that's, that's the position that we'll remain. But I don't think it's fair to, to only look at one side of the issue. And my office is trying to look at the rights of all involved and make recommendations based upon where the position was prior to September 15th and post September 15th.
So where, so where this is an administrative decision, um, what is the recommendation?
That because this, the application was submitted prior to September 15th, prior to Judge Hyde's ruling, even though it's still working its way through the process, that I recommend that as long as they meet the requirements, then you approve it under the Western Land Equities case law and, and progeny. Now, if they came in with a new concept plan, for example, they came in tomorrow to present a new concept plan, um, unless, uh, their motion to stay is approved by Judge Hyde, which has been filed. Unless that's approved, then I think as a county, to respect the checks and balances and the judiciary, judicial system that our state is set up under, I think we would have to say we're not going to entertain a new concept plan application because you're not grandfathered in, you're submitting it after Judge Hyde has made a ruling that has shifted the county's position on the effectiveness of county ordinance for the RSD and the development agreement.
So if this referendum here were to go forward, um, and the, say the county did go to not allow Los Angeles Beach to continue forward, then, then what about the concern of who, who stands to put the bill about how does that effectiveness?
As far as, like, attorney fees were.
Not necessarily attorney fees. I mean, that could be the smallest portion of the cost to the county really. I just don't know. At that point, do, is, can Los Angeles Beach expand on its own? You know, I, I know you have to get a certain amount of lots sold to make a, a project, you know, profitable. So, I mean, there's a lot of development there to take.
So I, I can't predict everything that will happen, but it could be as far as submitting a new RSD application to, to be looked at by the county. They have, they would have a right to do that as a property owner, you know, for that one side, so maybe the extreme of annexing into a different county or, you know, pursuing other options. There's, there's a wide range that has been discussed and presented. And so I think as a county, we have to look at, you know, if it's anyone coming in and, and basically an application, and then we say, oh, we want you to have to put fire sprinklers into every one of those homes, or we want you to have to connect to this, and then we pass a law after basically that application. We have to treat everyone the same. They're grandfathered in, even if the county would prefer that for health, safety, welfare. And so my office is, is trying to navigate this and say, um, whoever comes in, this is how we treat them. And we don't ignore the law, we don't ignore orders from the court, but we do, um, have the right of due process, just like any other petitioner has, to, to make our case to whatever court or appellate court that's well. And, you know, this, this will impact a lot of counties as well, as I've spoken to county attorneys from other counties. I think that, um, you know, precedent in case law is something that not just our counties can.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's hear it, yeah.
Director Gary Hirsch, CEO of the Chief of Police Service. I'll try to address the questions in order, but if I miss anything, please correct me if I'm wrong. So Commissioner McDonald's question, so, um, Robert, there's a lot of open space parcel. And that is between lots E44 and 45. So that needs a separate open space parcel in that application not being maintained by the HOA, as you presume. There are three open space easements that kind of belong to the drainage channels through the development. And those easements will also create a way.
Do you have any questions about how that?
So trail improvements and so forth. Yeah. Trail open space retained by the HOA. Is the open space parcel just intended to be open or is it actively used?
We don't have any, we swear it's relatively safe. It helps to open it some air, some of ours. And I'd rather just say. Okay, and next the Commissioner Anderson's questions and I'll try to address all of, was it Mr. Walker? Thank you. Um, so, um, let's start, I'll go in first. So the, the parking lot, we are very aware that it's been adopted not just by our contractors, but apparently it must be given away like free dwellings there, it's only because everyone is checking for it. We just completed this week a new parking lot that's off our construction access. We just kind of finished the construction date for the project. That will have between 150 and 200 spaces. And so the majority of those contractors that are ours will be relocating out to park those. We're also working with the Public Works Director, Brett Heiner. Brett pointed out to us that a lot is getting a little rutted, so we're gonna have one of our contractors go down there and add some roadways and try to get some of this stuff. Not everybody in that lot is a WPR contractor. We probably know that we're, we're, you know, making this project here. And so it's fairly assumed that a lot of those are ours. They should be relocating onto our project. We, we really can't control, you know, we, we tell our contractors what to do, but if there's a third party contractor or someone building homes that they have to park there, I think right now it's pretty important policy. So we'll do our best to get that screwed up. And we have a parking lot that we have to, should mitigate a lot of that pressure. But it's not just that we pay.
So, um, from things that I've heard, though, you do require, um, people to, you only have been laying so many vehicles up there, so.
Yeah, so what we have is a parking station plan for every contractor. So we do try to have them keep their cars where they're designated. So for those who would have been called in construction and get carried away, you can imagine. And then we do require those, the other personnel, the contractor, parked in as designated, one side on, and then we show them like supervised.
So are they gonna be able to go up and park now or do they still have to park down there and shovel their tools up?
They're gonna be able to park all of ours.
Okay.
That parking lot was under construction until about two weeks ago. So there was added pressure, which we apologize for and do our best to, but that's a respect. We didn't use the available. That lot is like a third of it is state land, leaving about, I don't know, two thirds is these county lands. So this is, it's a part of. Uh, let's see, so, um, all of our side by sides are places to ensure, so everybody's gonna be playing by the rules. We also may have to go through the OHB training, the county's ability to, through the state, which is much easier to really do with two lakes. Uh, as far as stormwater, so we have very regular slow water projections. We have all the necessary permits from the state where all the, already made regular inspections there on site, that's meant, if that's the fifth, quarter fifth, I'm gonna pay up to our site this. So right there, um, I think, yes, as Planned Group mentioned, you know, there are a number of little properties between us and downstream, so I'm not gonna say there's no silt at any time, some of the stream drains that we had, but I think we, we comply with all state statutes. If you come up outside and see all the bottles and the silt fence and everything else that we do. So, and we expect regularly. So I think we're in full compliance, but we're sensitive to the condition of the creek as a, as our, that's our language as well, the creek, those two are. All, all the drains on this particular class, they drain down to Three Tows Pond, which was an old stock pond that now we've upgraded. So all that stormwater is actually taking, it's up inside our course, so that basically is how we maintain that upper level of silt and stormwater control. And that is what we think is the structure of this. Have you answered any other questions?
So does any of your stormwater retention, detention, discharge plan involve years of grade?
Well, they're all tributaries, uh, Commissioner McDonald, so there's the left, you know, that's the right fork, you know, for, a little for.
Yeah, right here, when you're handling stormwater off of your roads and so forth, are you collecting that in separate retention or detention bases? You're not sending it down.
So there's, all the requirements of the state are that you have to repaint or repay in facilities, there's that one.
So did I miss any, Jerry?
I just want to add, what I'm seeing on that is what's called left hand fork, Three Tows Creek. It's just gonna be to the north of the pond, I believe. So can we just verify? Because it looks like that one bypasses the, we talk about the pond on, you know, that pond on, you know. So there's a pond on our, so. I don't know if I, because that is on that fork. What you're saying is there's a holding pond before it gets to Three Tows Creek. Is that a holding?
Yeah, just, just, they're up at that high and like those in 3A is sub tributaries of the left hand, the middle, the left hand fork. So some of the tributary goes into the old property through the.
So, some of the tributary goes into the old property through the, into the pond. If you look at the left side of the plat map here, you know, the right side, some of that does come down and feed into through where a road courses north of the Golden Pond. And then, on the very right-hand side, that then flows into the drainage that's the feeder for Freecho's Pond. So, they're not named sub-drainages that then become the left-hand fork. So, you're actually looking at about three or four drainage here moving into the middle fork that, that part of the, part of the left-hand and the middle fork, it was Freecho's, and then the other one, some extreme left-hand fork goes into the Golden Pond, and some split the difference between there. But all those, in the rough grading plan, that does include the drainage, the required drainage for the roads throughout this phase and all phases. Sorry, it's, you want to say the drainage up here?
The heavy equipment, you didn't address that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Walker said there's loading and unloading. I'm not aware of any of that. I will check all of our general contractors. They're supposed, I mean, all equipment is supposed to come to the side. Look, guys, there has been a decent amount of trucks. It's road base, we're actually in the process of paving the roads, which is a great way to make sure there's a little road. Some of it is the state cap and sign for the, of course, so that's all, you know, positive. So, I will check, and not aware of any heavy equipment that's being offloaded out there because they have to just drive it. So, for the most part, all heavy equipment, I assume they come up to our base camp, which is where my trailer is, and they basically offload it there for all of the actual jobs. But I'll definitely check that. Commissioner, this is the same. But all of that should be approved, so I just wanted to address it.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. I'm sorry.
Any other questions for the act? Questions? Thank you. No discussion?
My dad, Brian.
Sure.
And maybe a little, we have, so, is this on the west side of the golden property? If it doesn't, conflict in, um, structures or?
Yeah, to be fair, this is very good to hear. So, yes, it's due west uphill of the golden property. Okay. Okay. We look at motion on item number five.
Mr. Chair, make the motion that we approve the Wasatch Peak's grand subdivision Phase Three, final plat application number twenty-three, S L three-six, nine, first twenty-six month subdivision land located approximately to thirteen, or, driving, not incorporated market count based on conditions to start.
Say it. Motion in a second. All of us in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, item number six, Commissioner Fackler. This is regarding the dome project. At least, um.
Okay, um, let me simply back up the information. We had a, um, anyway, with that, I would say, a, 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 engineer design, we asked Wasatch Civil to deliver it, and they gave us a report as to how much it potentially cost us to do the landscape design and to also do the foundation design for the dome. The dome was over here. We just need to get the, um, the foundation put in, so we could put it on top of there. Um, the amount that they're asking for is $21,000 for Wasatch Civil. And then, at that point, they will also help us with the contractor. If we have not already found one, which I think we found one, the state has stepped in, and they're also providing the summer engineering on their side, and more funds to help the state with completing. So, it's not asking for $21,000, but it does not come from any of the general fund. It is going for the economic development grant, which is set up aside for this purpose, and it was, it's also coming from the tourism tax that we receive in the county, which is used, can be used for infrastructure. And since the solicitorism and economic development grant, we both, um, listed for, um, and that's a part B of the economic development grant, so I'm requesting use $21,000 of that, of those funds. So, there's several more funds that we can use for completion, which obviously might be over $18,000, but the money is just, I don't know, $1,000, you can ask for about $20,000 for Wasatch Civil.
Thank you, Commissioner Fackler. Are there any questions for the Commissioner?
I, Wayne, I don't know why I thought these were already being built. Were they not going to be built these during the summer?
When did we build it during the year? Because the building, the building, on next July. And if they're willing, the snow comes out, um, and the type of the foundation we're planning pretty yet is one that will be able to be done during the winter, unless we have a couple of these now.
Well, I guess what has been the delay on this project?
And I found out that it's invading, because it's invaded, and everybody's so busy, we have not anything yet on the RFP that is still on the website requesting for an RFP. And so, that's what we're waiting for to come back here later.
So, we still have no contract?
Actually, we do have one person that has submitted some information, but he's not, he does not want to, um, he does not want to do it unless we get approved for the, um, I mean, the, the engineering has to be done before he will come in and call, add a contract or go on a contract. We do have one person who will get it. So, we're waiting on that foundation. Part of the plan is going radiant heating in the bottom of this dome, so that way we can really not have to buy any additional units to have, um, heat, dirt, water. It's an all-year-round dome, and they keep neighbors, and it's, uh, should be at the end of the year with a 200 or 400 people. And it's an all-year, all-year-round type of dome.
So, is there an outbuild for the boiler room, or is that inside the dome?
Well, I don't know. So, they took the dome, and I just, I requested yesterday, we're claiming state parks to record, and he says they'll build this building for the heat exchange area.
And all of that's coming from the economic development fund now?
Yeah, economic development, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a benefit our dome, sure, I understand.
We had some grant funding as well, Derek.
That, that's correct. We had, we had a $100,000 grant. Once we get this part of the dome finished, then we will be able to apply for another part, uh, part B grant that will give us the additional village that we want to build up there, which will also give us, uh, places for people to stay, corporate events, or maybe those kinds of things that come in there, that is all in part of the tourism plan. And once that happens, and when the build-out gets done, it'll be a nice place for all of us to have, uh, lodging, lodging for invaders, lodging for wedding guests, or whatever it might be. It's a complete, complete package. At that point, before we do that, we'll have to be another round of grant writing to get those extra funds. So, uh, we're just doing the match from the G R P for the rest of those other understate grants.
Where, where does it be in store?
The dome right now, in the dome at the state park.
Just a couple, Congress, Commissioner Fackler, um, geotechnical study, have we been able to address that for the structure?
That's what Wasatch Civil is going to do. That's all on that file that they proposed to us. And we do, they have a technical.
Their first, their first bullet under project assumption says any geotechnical investigation or study, if required, will be done by others. So, it looks like they're not including that in their scope, and my guess is the dome manufacturer would want to have some kind of geotechnical study. I don't know if the parks has done one up there recently or not, but you may want to make sure that's addressed.
Okay, I can do that. So, basically, I'm just asking for, 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 for,[1806.12] puts the burden on the applicants to get well-served letters from the companies in order to provide the service. And we can, we can treat it like, uh, a water sewer will serve letter, and require them to provide those to us as part of the process.
So, they call Starbuck and say, go, go to service area, and they say yes, and that checks the box.
Um, I would, I would say, they say yes, and give them a letter.
Yeah, this is the only one of all the utilities. I, I agree with, with the, the gas and electric, making sure we're good on those those. I just have a little bit of concern with cables. We have multiple providers, we have multiples of water coming in, I mean, there's just a list of, so.
Please wireless options.
Sure, wireless options, so is the thought to, if we get approval from one wireless option, does that mean any wireless option can be granted? I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that we're saying, because one of the comments says something about oscillation of conduits. And if we're doing fiber, for example, and, and subdivision in the corporate, and fiber's coming in, well, that makes a hundred percent sense, we gotta have conduits installed, we're making sure that's done correctly, but I guess I'm a little concerned about how we're gonna address it.
Um, well, I believe all cable companies use the same cables, I may be wrong, but if I live in Ogden, like I live in Ogden, but I can choose whatever cable company I wanna go to, and those cable companies come out and they extend it from the box to the house.
So how about wireless options?
Wireless option, you mean like, uh?
Sure, Starbuck.
Is that right?
Yeah.
There's still a signal over the point to point. And as far as the, the internet cable goes, actually, who, who owns it? So, for example, in Morgan City, the system is an open system, as I understand it, and there's multiple providers. However, on Morgan Valley Drive, that system's owned by Beehive, and they don't allow carriers to hold their number, keep on their, their community system. In other parts of the county, we've got Century Link, we've got, so yeah, there is a, a myriad of, and perhaps the solution is to say, you know, if, if internet is to be provided through a, a, um, physical cable through fiber, then a conduit, then it needs to be placed. If it's going to be provided through some other source, okay, so be it. But I guess the hope is that the people aren't digging up the road afterwards to put a power cable.
Right.
So, the way I understood what we were doing is we were requiring the applicant to identify at least one provider, and we give them a well-served letter, and indicate that they would provide a service to the, whether it, it does, we're not specifying who it is, it may be, you know, any number. I think that it may be good to require the conduit to be installed even if the identified provider is wireless. So that if another provider comes in the future and wants to run fiber, not carrying up the road and want to run fiber. But, so, does that, I mean, does that address your concern?
No, I, I've, I've just never dealt with this, where you have to have a well-served and be a provider. And then, I, it seems like depending on where you're at, there can be multiple providers. So how in the world do you, um, do you get a well-served?
Well, we're not big kids.
Understood, understood, I just.
I, I, are you saying, the, the other option would be just not to identify cable, fiber as a dry utility, and they do whatever they want, which is what we have right now, right? And whatever they want may include no conduit and no cable, that's, that's my situation, and so I use wireless. I mean, I, I guess I didn't have to follow. It's just so slippery.
See, like, uh, like, uh, there's a group of people that have a subdivision, and you're gonna have a, I mean, a well-served, or I don't care if it's well-served or not. Obviously, infrastructure needs to be put in underground before we start paying the main undergrowth, whether it be a big tubular conduit, all this, these extra things, cable or whatever, it'd be like, uh, if, if that's the way, I mean, look, in the future, we're gonna have to go, just make sure that it's put into the ground, so that way the conduit can be turned in there afterward. And that way, we don't have to live in a territory where there's always the fear, or being out of a century, or whoever it might be, because hopefully, make sure we can have some money to put into an open system, and we don't know that, uh, at this point, but the state is trying to provide for somebody to be able to do that throughout all of Utah. And so those are the things that I think we need to make sure that in the future development, we put in something, or we probably put in something on any kind of subdivision, that we put the utilities in there so that this road does not have to be dug up again.
So, I appreciate that comment from Commissioner Fackel, because I think it circles and comes back to the main point, what if there isn't a provider for cable? Then what?
They should put it in the city for a future provider. And does this apply to all subdivisions or only, I mean, the small subdivision included?
Uh, yeah, it would, it would, it would be required for all future subdivisions, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't restrict it for small, personally.
Who would dictate the size of slave? Who would dictate this type of pipe? Who would dictate on that official provider?
Well, um, typically, communities have engineering design details that, that would specify all of those things, uh, I don't believe we have those. Um, so I, I can do some research and find out what the need is, league size for other communities like Ogden is, and we can require that.
And if, I guess for me, it would be, it would be dependent on the provider, maybe some providers say I can be points for so many other feet, and then I want this, and this, and this, maybe not the others as well. I've got different equipment, so this is how I would do it, so I, 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 I'm not against this at all, I just wanna make sure.
I would, I would believe more let the engineers do the designing, so if there's, if there's a requirement that they put in the seat for a future provider, then they need to account for that through their engineering, because they're the ones that are gonna stand for it.
Uh, we would need to have our engineer familiar with the piece, what we think is the minimum.
So, they don't stand, they don't stand for a conduit and design for a huge company, pretty much, yeah, but they give recommendations, they say, hey, this is what I'm gonna do, and I'm not gonna pull my stupid, so, I don't think, so.
So, 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 and why do you want your, so your, or Commissioner Anderson, um, if, if I, I mean, right now, which area you just, a lot, I don't even know, I'm not saying you, but somebody who's near it is not, not the future. But what about us planning for the future instead of just going up for a car? So, you know, whether you feel it, if you feel it, better to come. So, without being prepared, that's all I'm saying, we don't know the providers yet, we don't know them yet, we didn't know four years ago, you know, some, some of us may never know where we're gonna be in the future, four years ago. But the future came, but we are there now. So, I'm just saying, let's make sure we put that into the policy, some kind of policy, that you prepare for that. There's a subdivision to be, I will, I will, thirteen homes, because we do not have something for us, they cannot get internet, and we're trying to get internet, but they're still. So if we were to add, um, fiber in the ground, or a conduit, we could easily throw that fiber through that conduit to this subdivision, and that subdivision would now have internet. And so, I'm just saying, let's look to the future, see, okay, what will we do to make things better for the future? I mean, in the future, you can make it fly in a car, or instead of driving it, that's longer than the future, so.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with Commissioner Fackel. Um, usually, when you have multiple lots in a subdivision, they have a, a drive, a utility easement, and it's, and it's in back of a walk or a back of a curb, like, ten feet. My gas line in front of my house is ten feet into my property, it's an easement, but it has nothing to do with the city or anything, they, they don't, they don't care, and people can come in and out whenever they want in that easement. So, I think easements can be required, but I'm not against providing one, I'm really not, let's just make sure who's dictating where these boxes go, um, the lights are covered, who's gonna be okay setting up on it. What I'm used to doing is saying, who's gonna provide the water? And then I go to that company and say, how do you want me to build it? And they say, this is how I wanna build it, okay, we will, or shoe it, or gas, or light, or power, who's gonna provide the power? And this group is, hey, how do you want us to build it, much newer standards? But cables just, uh, is tough, because I wanna make sure we're following, it may be right, there's some type of general standard that's followed on more boxes for makes for, um, um, right, Ts for, I mean, however you're building it, maybe there is a general standard for cable, we wanna look at that. Um, but, but what I've seen also in, there's multiple lot subdivisions, most of the time there isn't a utility easement included on the backside of the right away, or whoever lots are kind of in there, you know, you could.
I think we have that requirement, I think we have a ten-foot P U V requirement.
Yeah, there's a ten-foot P U V requirement on the sides of the property lines, um, because right-of-way, though, extends beyond curver sidewalk, based on our design standards for roads.
Others are, I think, ways to, P U Vs in some vikes like that.
That's correct, but I believe that P U Vs straddles all the right-of-way and the property, the property line.
All.
So, we typically, public utilities, they're gonna be next to a right-of-way, they're, they're designed, but I, I don't, I don't think our code requires a public utility using all on the front line, I think it's assumed it's gonna be on the public right-of-way or private street, or whatever it is, and the design of that roadway competes that, because it extends beyond, at least several feet past where the curver sidewalk is supposed to go. So, I, I can check that, double-check the, the design statement that competes that.
So, but I agree, actually. I was just gonna say, but to me, the fundamental question is whether, huh, we want to require, I mean, ideally, there's a cable provider, fiber, internet provider, that would serve the subdivision, give them the standards, and then we'll, if we don't have it, and I would, I'd like to have, figure out whatever the minimum standard ought to be, and I, I know it may not exactly match up, but if, if we had that kind of conduit in the front of my house and down the street, I think we could, Beehive would extend the fiber in, and, and run it down, even if they had to, you know, put in different boxes here or there, whatever, where, as it is now, it's like, there's no conduit, so it's a big, you know, dig or drill project in order to bring it from there. It's, I've got fiber all around, just nobody can bring it down. And, and if there was conduit, then I think it'd be easier. But I, I think, for example, that, um, a cable TV company, was a lot, used to be in the, anyway, I actually think there is a, a conduit in there, but it's not small, it's not big enough for, to run the fiber. That's why, so I'd like to require, but I, I think it's a very good point to say, what are we requiring? We ought to at least identify some minimum standard that anybody could work within, may not be their optimal solution, but, or what they would have engineered themselves. So, I would, my, my inclination is to approve this, but have to do that follow-up.
What, what, what segment?
Yes, so I, I have a concern, I, I agree wholeheartedly with putting in the conduit for future, for future subdivision, particularly if you're building a large subdivision, you're gonna have twenty, thirty, forty homes in a subdivision, it makes sense to connect all the conduit, which would involve connecting the conduit, all of that. My concern is more with small subdivision. The reason that this is actually on my mind more right now is because over the last month and a half, all of us has been installing fiber through Prodigy. Um, when I, and I did a lot of research, and I've actually something about, it's happened already in Carson, but let's say I did a two-lot subdivision, right? My house, I was gonna build a house, another one for my kid later on, and this is part of the code that says I gotta put conduit. And I put conduit, first of all, the question is, where are you gonna put the conduits? Just along the road? Probably, right? Through the easement, but.
Then what are you dividing? Because if you have to divide it.
Let's say the both are on the county road, right? Both have two hundred feet of front, on the county road, like, they're gonna build it in there, like, how does this apply to the road subdivision? Had I done this for my own lot, all of us came in just two weeks ago and put conduit through Prodigy, right? They did it on the opposite side of the road from my house. So then they drove over the road, put a vault on the side of my house, on the, the side of the road by my house, and from there, they just, they just trench it, like, they just tear it into the soil, they don't even do conduit from, from the vault to the home. Um, but, that would've been a complete waste of my time and energy and money to put a conduit on my side of the road across my lot, because they were gonna do it on the opposite side of the road for multiple reasons, there wasn't a ditch there, it was easier for them to run, and, and so on. So, my concern is, are we going to end up having people put conduit in the ground in situations, particularly small subdivisions? On a large subdivision, I get it, because you're gonna have, you should have connectivity through that, but on a small subdivision, to me, it doesn't make sense, it's kinda like the curver better sidewalk thing, that we have ultimately said, we're not gonna do that on small subdivisions, because it doesn't make sense to have your boat go along, and all of a sudden, you got curver better sidewalk for two hundred feet, and then it goes back to a county road, and then, I, I feel the same way about conduit for internet. And frankly, as far as the future goes, maybe, maybe fiber is not the future, I don't know, but maybe, yeah, it may be a lot of wireless in another ten years, or another three years, probably, you know.
Well, you could add a provision here that no additional infrastructure is required because it's already in, then, then we would require it to put in.
Well, but it's, for the Edison rows, I mean, the infrastructure's already in, run their house, and based on how they're dividing it, we're not gonna make them go over the road. Yeah, it, it may be infrastructure there, but in my case, let's say that all of us, the only reason all of us is doing that through Prodigy is because they got a state grant to do it, four state grants, that made it possible, otherwise, they would never do it, because we're cheap, hard, 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 it's just hard. But let's say that they weren't intending to do that, I put conduit in there, and years down the road, they said, oh, yeah, we are gonna find you to do it, and then put it on the opposite side of the road, I've spent that time and money for what? For nothing. And I feel like that's just another burden on, on a homeowner or property owner to add more than mainly on, so, my, my inclination is to say, this is a great idea, but let's make it on, not on small subdivisions, or maybe find a, a way to deal with those situations where we're on a county road, or we're not installing, you know.
But there are small subdivisions that, based on their layout, have to put in the street.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's only small subdivisions that are on existing roads, I don't know, maybe it's, I'm just.
Why is it a P U V, uh, maybe, why don't you show P U Vs? On the ten feet on the back of, like, city hall cities, do ten foot on the back or that?
I don't think I've seen you do that.
I have not seen a city hall that's on that, doesn't.
Well, I can look into it.
That's great, because that way, you got P U V, that means whoever's doing the lots would say, there's gonna be P U Vs, and everyone else is gonna come in, but there's the ability for dry utilities to come in and paint from the private.
Well, I should, I could be with all of us, and gone across the road, and have a conduit for my house.
I mean, probably not because the by-bars is too close to the road, it's a distorted area, it's eight feet off the road. So that's probably the reason we wouldn't have, um, but, but that's a good question, I mean, would they, I don't know, probably depends on how old the conduit is, fire, and should there be some size?
But again, I think also, you know, water, sewer, and gas, those are utilities that you absolutely have to have, and while some like our, the internet is a necessi, is a necessary utility, there are people who might say, I don't wanna have that, so why should I put a conduit? I don't want it, it's not a necess, a necessity, or I'm gonna only do wires. I don't know, there's, there's, I can see both sides, but I'm not opposed to say, hey, let's plan for the future, but what if the future isn't? It's one thing to say we're gonna put a gas line in, because you can't deliver gas from this.
Well, the argument still stands for gas, too, because what's that would be required? Put in, and so that it's, the utility company has a plan, and where this is gonna go, and where the, so, but the internet company's done with the system.
So, on the, I have a great reason.
So, on the, I have a great reason. On the broadband plan, you gotta, and, uh... On that broadband internet plan that was submitted to the state, it asked us to really determine that we would supply internet, um, conduit at, for new subdivisions, not here, but here. If we don't look out at that, there's a possibility we're gonna hit on it. So, we may need to talk about this one further. But I'm just, and then I also look at another subdivision that's several lots. And if you try to go there, you're suggesting a P U V, um, around the backside, I don't know if we work for this subdivision. So, I mean, as, I'm, it's a little confused. I don't know what you're ready for, but I don't think it'd be easier subdivision to have a separate.
And I appreciate the comment, my question to the back, though, I would just add that the P U V is on the 10th grade on the backside of the right of line. I'm not, I'm not talking about property lines.
Along the road.
Along the road. You're talking about utility.
Also, can I make another question, I have another question on eight dash twelve dash twenty on the 10 lots. Um, how does that work if you're going to do a multi-unit lots? Is that one lot per unit or one lot per set or how does that work? So, how would that work?
It doesn't matter, it's 10 lots or less. If there are five townhomes and each townhome has two units and if you're still, it's 10 units. So, a small subdivision is 10 lots or less. It's 10 lots or less, it doesn't, doesn't matter if it's townhomes, duplexes. 10 lots or less.
I like it.
But that's what defines a small subdivision.
10 lots or less is what a small subdivision is.
It's eight or less, isn't it?
It's 10 or less. That's the confusing part. Our concept plan says eight or less. I approve, nine or 10, it has to go to planning commission and county commission for approval. And then, when they submit their preliminary final plot, because both of those can be submitted at the same time, it just goes to the planning commission. It, it doesn't come back to you. And so to be consistent with the definition of small subdivision, we're recommending change, or we're, we've given you a text amendment to change that so that the small subdivision is handled both for preliminary final plot and concept plan the same.
So, the sample motion, should that say 10 instead of eight? Well, I'll throw out a motion.
Oh, we need to move it into a public hearing.
Oh, yeah. No, that's your motion. Let's do that, let's move it. We need to throw out a motion. Did, do you wanna talk about the town center?
Oh, yeah, we're talking about that.
Um, the planning commission recommended and directed staff to make a change, given, um, some of the problems with the previous rezonies to town center. They thought it might be a benefit to the county if they were, developers were required to bring a narrative and a concept plan forward with the rezoning prior to the development agreement. So that, this text will be completed.
Didn't look like the requirements of that concept are real stringent. I mean, it's a fairly basic concept, correct?
That's correct. Um, rezonies typically, including town center, never required any type of narrative or concept plan. So this would be kind of giving it, uh, putting in between the PC zoning district and a regular rezoning. They'd be required to bring some sort of the concept.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Throw out a vote, meaning hold the public hearing.
The motion is second, is to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing. All those in favor? Aye, aye. All in opposed? If the motion passes during the public hearing, I don't see a problem.
I think I'll be happy to comment, say to each individual things, except for I wanna, I wanna get this shit when you make the motion, be three separate motions because that's the way the planning commission gets us to take part in the court before you raise the motion. I want to see that.
You guys are talking a little bit, and I'm not, I'm not getting what they're saying. Sorry for that.
There is no mic in her repliner.
I'm gonna stand back, my dead end down, so if you're dead, talk.
Tina just suggested that we separate the three items and the three separate motions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no additional public comments, uh, we'll promote him to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the other meeting. So, I'm, second.
I gotta write a comment, I'm sorry. Shelley, can you reach the link? And, um, the town centers, I wanted to know, you know, like up in Porterville and Bridgeville area, we have traditionally not wanted town centers. And in this meeting, as I'm sitting here and you're talking about things, if you could explain things more about what you're considering, what this is gonna do to us in the future? Is that a reasonable request? I mean, like, if I go online and I look at the package, who can I ask questions to beforehand?
You can contact the planning staff.
They're really busy.
Any of us, any of us can work on it. And I mean, every call, everything, but that doesn't mean you can't call and ask it. To maybe answer your question, town centers only currently only exist in, uh, in the, in the areas surrounding the base of Traverse Loop. Um, I don't believe that town centers only has ever been contemplated for our, what some might call our village centers, center of, of Porterville, um, Peterson, et cetera. Um, that's never been contemplated in those areas, at least not in the six years I spent in planning mission or during this time. But, and what we're talking about, this particular amendment, is to the town center zoning ordinance. Currently, if someone wants to have a piece of property rezoned, they come in, they don't have to show us what they plan to do with the property, they just have to say, I want to rezonate to this particular zoning. And the request from the planning commission was to amend it so that if someone comes in and says, I want to rezonate town center, which again, currently is only allowed in that area surrounding the base of town. They would be required to provide the, the very basic concept plan and say, this is conceptually what I want to do with the area and why I want to rezonate. So, it makes sense.
Yes. And then, you know, with each of you being elected officials, and, you know, I support you having the right to, you know, you're representing, you represent us. So, I support you having the right to vote on things. But with our, you know, county planner, Josh, but he's not elected. So, can you help me understand why he should be able to approve small subdivisions where there's no recourse or, not recourse, but no input from me or like, through that?
One of the things that we get to do as a legislative party is to designate who the applicable land use authority is for various levels of application. And the county council prior to us designated the planning director as the land use authority for the county for those types of communications. That's how that works.
One thing I might add is that the subdivision helps your pass the rezonation application. So, if the property's already zoned, whatever is intended to be done by that southern side, it's an administrative run. So we have legislative and administrative bodies. Legislative always have to come to this law. And legislative is essentially, we're, we're rewriting the law of the county, the code of the county. Administrative decisions are different. Administrative decisions, if the code says, these are the requirements, it has a list of the requirements. And if the applicant complies with every one of the requirements, then administratively, they're allowed to do it. And so, the reason that Josh can do that is because he's doing an administrative decision. In other words, we set the, the code, we say, these are the requirements of a small subdivision. Has to be 10 lots or less, it has to, you know, meet certain requirements, it has to be within the zoning, et cetera, et cetera. If an applicant comes in and supplies an application and it meets all of our criteria that's in the code, then administratively, he can make a decision. Because the decision isn't, do we do it or don't we do it? The decision is, did they comply with all the requirements in the law that they happen to comply with or to be able to do?
So that's all the, all the codes that you guys discuss all the time in, in our making changes of the company. So those are really important.
Yeah, absolutely, every, every code is important. Now, most of what we discuss in our meetings is not code. Typically, if it is code, it's going to be in a public hearing. So these three items that we're discussing right now, those are part of the code. And that's why it comes to us when we have to talk about and say, well, do we want the code to say that? Do we want the code to now require everybody to put in, uh, internet? For example, you've heard a lot of back and forth about that. Do we want the code to say, um, that a concept plan applies to eight lots or less or 10 lots or less? Because in one side it says 10 lots and in another part it says eight, we wanna get that, make that consistent. So those are items that we're talking about changing. In most of our meetings, we don't do a lot of code changes, but occasionally we do. And if you ever see on our meeting agenda a public hearing, that's a legislative amendment generally speaking. So that is a, either code amendment, either to, so a rezonation code amendment as well, um, or to the county codes, which is essentially, our code is our law. It says, these are just things you're gonna apply. The code is, it's comprised of such a lot of pieces to it, but most of the decisions we make are administrative in nature, subdivisions, et cetera, once they get passed the legislative stage.
Appreciate you taking the time to talk with me. Excellent. And I'm concerned, listen, if this county, like, I love this county. We have a big responsibility, I'm sure. We are county bond. For the future of this beautiful county, for each of our private property plans. So not be stepped upon or taken away from us. I appreciate you and, um, I pray for you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate you saying that. I hope that all of the residents of the county know and understand and we take it seriously as well. Um, and, and you know, one of our obligations is becoming informed and understanding the codes we're talking about and, and why we're talking about changing them and how we're talking about changing them. And then the long-term impacts of that, because all of us have children and grandchildren that have and will grow up in this community and we wanna see it thrive as well. So, it's important to all of us. Okay, seeing no additional public comments, I'll look for motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene a public meeting. So, second. Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you oppose? Okay, motion passes. Mr. Anderson needs to step down here. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, um, we have three items here. I, I like the idea of separating them into three motions.
I think you did.
Yes.
Before you do that, I just wanna make something clear. Back in 2006 or 2009, our area plan was being discussed. They were requiring us to be have town centers in every one of those areas. So, can you, or never, it's, you know, they use, yes, it was discussed and they were pushing us to do that on the area of last, and we were just in your knowledge, so.
I'm actually gonna correct you on that, Commissioner Parkwell, that P T R was village center, not town center.
Okay, that's correct, you are absolutely correct.
But, but nonetheless, yes, there, there are certainly, um, centers of our communities that have been discussed. But as far as the town center zoning goes, that's never been, at least third-line tenure discussed. It's been applied, you know, except not in the back of the church specifically for that area as part of the planning commission, which is the town center. Okay, three items here. Um, I'll, I'll go the way you guys wanna go, I have the idea of separating them now. I, I think the internet item deserves a little more discussion and thought personally. But I'll go whichever direction you guys wanna go. With that, let's, let's take it one by one. We'll look for motion on, uh, Maricay County Code eight dash twelve dash twenty. This is changing requirement for concept plan to apply to 10 lots or less instead of eight lots.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the revision to Maricay County Code. Section eight dash twelve dash twenty, changing the requirements for concept plan to apply to 10 lots or less based on the text listed in the day of the changes discussed this evening. Stat where they thought to be through 2023.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
I'm not sure. I, I like this, but keep it consistent, that originally it was smaller than that. So, I have a vote. Because I can really change it later or ask to have a change or reverse later.
Okay.
We do have, we do have to make the code all consistent.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve revisions to Maricay County Code, um, section eight dash five K dash two, changing the requirements within the town center zoning, concerning development agreements based on the text listed in the day of the statute. Three-year-long text change discussed this evening.
Second, the motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose, the motion passes. So I've been planning to move forward on the other one as well, but the consensuses we wanna discuss a little more and get the, um, some background on the work sizes and so forth. I'm going to bring it back on for the meeting. I guess, I, I'm going to go back to where I got held up. I never heard about that happen, I, because I, I was very interested in knowing throughout without the word of a, a nine-lot subdivision that stretches across the Bridgeville lane with 200 feet of frontage on every lot, how would that work? When, when one person wants to develop, are they just supposed to, the 200 feet, I'm gonna think of that.
If they're the ones proposing the subdivision?
Yeah, they would.
Generally, during a subdivision.
Well, they'd have to do the whole, they're as a subdivision.
Yeah. So, and, but when you figure out utilities, there's some, they put it, but... So here's something, let me just address, it's a negotiation. We impose these requirements on large subdivisions. And we don't worry about it because we think, well, there's a developer that's gonna put it in. Developers, bad people, developers have lots of money, developers will put it in. But the cost of that, they're, they're also in the business to make money. And the cost of that goes into the cost of lots, the people that purchase. And so there's a big section of our community, all the new stuff is going into these subdivisions. Pays higher lot prices and it's all the... There, a while back, county adopted an ordinance that imposed the same requirements on the small lots, even the one-ops that were going on. And then they kind of immediately backed out of it because people were saying, hey, I'll send it to this. Do I even want things? Well, but you never, there's certain... Dividing one thing, well, but you never, to a certain degree, it's like, yeah, you are, you're, you're entering into the arena on a small scale. You are acting as the developer of that subdivision. You're no longer just the farmer dividing their land. So, I'm kinda like, if, if we were imposing a particularly expensive, um, off-site requirement, I'm like, okay, I get it, that's really difficult. But, to throw down a conduit in an already existing trench for your other dry utilities? I'm, yeah, it's an additional cost, I get it. It's not so much that I would be over it. So, let me just ask the question. Cause I was asking for a community member on this. So, nine lots across the area, only one person wants to build their home. Other brothers and sisters are gonna speak to lots. I don't increase the value of it. So, everything he has to do for his one lot is for all nine lots. The development of, when they separated the lots. He has to, he has to put all the money in front of water, for that. There, well, he does a one lot subdivision, it does subdivide the brothers and sisters lots. And then, and then they have to come in the future. I, I do agree, it, it, it's, it was more difficult than that. You know, we need that family property, you know, so.
What if you internet, you should never pass it down. That herself, how to divide the money.
I agree.
What if we cheated internet similar to how we do water? And we said, look, if you're within a certain distance of existing, in-ground internet system, you're gonna put conduit. And if you're not, you need to have a partner for this. Maybe your mind simply, we're gonna do Spartan. Okay, great. Maybe your plan is not gonna put in a conduit. I mean, does that, does that help satisfy some of those issues? And I don't know what that distance might be, although it's a few within a quarter mile. It's a fairly long distance.
I don't know. I think, I think it's 300 feet if I remember right. It's a water of 1,000 feet.
I, I actually don't know the number for that. But I still.
There aren't any ways to, the part that the roads goes, the street's already there. Richville, the water, from my understanding, they said they're not gonna provide the water, so they gotta go well separately. So, they're not gonna be moving up the road. You can stretch those already in, so, if you wanna make.
Well, they can only get one will serve because they want everyone to share a park.
Well, they could go buy additional.
Not from Richville though.
Well, they can get one will serve and that doesn't help the subdivision.
Yeah, I know. Cause it would have been a lot if we just bought.
But, they're not great, it's a lot of.
I don't.
Well, so, then, I think we put this off. And let's try to come up with some common language. Suggest, I, I think it is important to require internet. I'd like to understand more fully Commissioner Fackel's comment about the grant. I don't want to lose grant opportunities for the majority of the county because it's a requirement on the small subdivision. So, Commissioner Fackel, you can send us the language from the grant to look at. Um, I think that would be helpful.
I think, uh, from the internet's, uh, we'll see. Okay, 200 feet of compass.
No, it's not in the overall scheme. No. Like I said, they generally go.
Oh, in your, in your example here, if there's not a water system, you gotta make it. There's not a sewer system running going in, then there may not be gas, there's probably not natural gases there.
Yeah, we must.
Let's assume there's not natural gas. Are we really gonna have the only required hole that they dig is to put a conduit for it? I don't know, I just, that's why, I don't, I think it's a discussion. I'm sure there's a good solution to what you just told me.
I mean, the plan, everyone, you have the internet plan on your computer, it was sent to you. In the meeting that we had a couple months ago, we discussed the internet, it's in there. I will find out exactly the pay and, uh, I'll talk with them while I'm down at this, this conference I'm at. And I will ask them specifically, if they're ready to tomorrow, I will ask them, um, to give me the state, what the state requirements are for the grants. If they have to at this point. If they don't, then we can, I would say let's postpone this audience for now, or let's call them until the next meeting. So, we can get some more information on it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we postpone, uh, propose a revisions to Oregon County Code, Section 8-12-46. Changing the utility section, find your utilities until our next meeting.
Second, the motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, that moves us into our mission commentary.
Brett Heiner called with respect to the budget item we were discussing a little bit. And he thought we should have 30,000. I think we were talking in the twenties when I had a last meeting I was at. And I don't know where settled in terms of what budget that was.
See, I'm able to fire up these.
See, we're claiming that was the lease payment on the used. Spread out.
I would buy here, it's 30. I would buy here.
No.
That's how they use it over. I'd call it a day.
But, and I'm just looking at how he's on, he asked me to call, buy him that 30,000 or lower.
No, at least in the lease for a year.
Oh, yeah.
I'd prefer to find one in the 60,000, 70,000 dollar range instead of buying it out of a lease on it.
He was, he was, my dad, mine, he was displaced out. So, I guess chances.
Yeah, cause that's not even a bunch of comments.
Whatever was that for the week? Ever remember?
He was all over for the airport that we talked about. He was suggesting that we added 30,000 dollars a year for a lease for one. I personally would prefer that we just buy one now, buy one, let's say for 60,000, 70,000 dollar range instead of doing a lease on it. Use a lease equivalent. Okay, I guess we can see what's in there. I don't have other comments. Commissioner Fackel, you have any comments?
I have a, I have a group of reflections that was raised earlier in the public night, uh, about UTVs, riding on public roads without licenses. If we're gonna let them do any kind of enforcement on few people or a few individuals or entities, I think we need to go countywide and start enforcing on them. Um, because I see it all the time, only in other roads without licenses. And so, if any person riding one, we're gonna enforce that. That's one. The other item is, um, uh, let's see. Besides, we're afraid of losing 300 governors, so, that's about it. Meeting's gonna break down here, there's a lot of opportunity. I'd like somebody to start thinking about whether or not we should be having a, we should be in discussion with the local courts. And if I have some more information on that. Um, also, uh, we need to look at contract for our legal services. Um, and see whether or not, what we're gonna do with those. Because our contract's coming up soon.
Legal services, meaning?
Where we need to have us.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Lane, I just wanna make sure, I was following the UTV down the road the other day, it turned into your driveway. Just wanna make sure that it's licensed.
I actually do have a license, but, uh, it's a different kind of license.
Oh.
It's, it's called a license to go within one mile of your land, to be able to get your farming equipment. If we're gonna enforce it upon them, we're gonna enforce it upon all, including me.
I was just giving you grief.
That's alright, you can give me.
By the way, at least that's video.
I think we need to all follow the line for candy.
I think that our Chair, Mr. Fackel, does a very good job of pushing overall. I have other videos, I don't have anything other than, I, I don't know where we're at. It's an asphalt situation here. We just have a corner.
No, we got three bits on it.
So, we just need to present it at lowest for. Let's play one of the just like you were talking about.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson, uh, I, I just have one item that is, I wanted to thank our, our department. Had some elected officials open last week. And for several weeks before that, they've been prepping for our budget meetings. Um, particularly Leslie, Kimberly, and Julie, who all supported us through many, many hours of budget meetings. Uh, we started at 3:00 PM and went till 8, 9 o'clock every night, three or four nights. That's a lot of, a lot of time spent away from our families and away from other responsibilities to ensure that the county budget is the way it needs to be. And we really appreciate our, our staff and, and other elected officials who put a lot of effort in on that. So, just wanna thank you for that time. Okay, are there any other items that need to be discussed before we adjourn?
Anything that you're worried? Uh, I would just send a message. We set up at our meeting, but please remember, as commissioners, that I believe you have worked.
Yeah, I spoke with the superintendent about scheduling something, uh, a little over a week ago, but had not scheduled it because we were having budget meetings, trying to be cognizant of our time. So, we'll get something scheduled in the next little while.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, all those in motion adjourned.
So, move.
Second, thanks. Your adjourn.